Wonder why it's over here?
I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to all where everybody please rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening in order to design the best possible programs for the children in our parish. As we wind down the first nine-week period of the school year, we ask a special blessing upon all of those who come together daily to support our school district. As we gather with our seniors next week for their Ring Day, we ask that you watch over each of them and allow them to not only enjoy the celebration of the moment, but to also remember the importance of this final year to their future happiness and success. These things we pray in your name, amen.
Ms. Egan, will you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foote, roll call please.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan, Mrs. Jackson, Mrs. Lemoine, Mrs. Disart, Mr. England, Mr. Long, Mr. Smith, Mr. Warner, Mrs. White.
Thank you, Ms. Foote. We have a point of privilege, Ms. Disart, please.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. At this time, I would just like to take this time to ask for a moment of silence. We have had great loss in our educational community. First, we had Mr. John Akamondo, who was a longtime teacher and a principal with us, and then Ms. Erin Keel, who was a teacher and then a librarian and worked with us for many years, and then we have Ms. Laura Sullivan, who was a teacher and then a principal for many, many years, and lastly, but not least, we had Mr. Jack Serenay's young son, Jonathan Serenay, young man. Everybody knows Jack Serenay and his wife Bonnie, and they lost their young son Jonathan. So I'd like to take a moment at this time to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. And our hearts and prayers go out to all of these families, the Akamondos, the Keels, the Sullivans, and the Serenays. Thank you.
And our hearts go out to them. Also, we have another point of privilege, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. England. I would just like to give a shout-out to Chaminet High's volleyball coach, Kelly Pleasure. Kelly just received a 700th win, I think it was Friday night, and she was actually interviewed on Friday Night Football, the first female coach ever to be interviewed on Friday Night Football. So congratulations to Kelly.
Could I add, I saw the interview on Friday Night Football with Ed Daniels and JT Curtis, and the joke was made, Ed said it to JT Curtis, that he finally met someone who had more wins than Curtis had. And he interviewed Kelly over the phone and talked not only about the tremendous feat that she has accomplished, as really when we went back co-ed in 1988, '89 school year, she was the first and new volleyball coach for that new regime. So she's been there since '88, '89, so she's the only volleyball coach that Chaminet High has had since we did return to co-ed status. But they also talked about, and had her talk about, the recovery of the school system post-Katrina and the hard work of everyone within St. Bernard Parish to bring the schools back and the community back. So it was a wonderful interview with her accomplishments and tying in to the accomplishments of the school system and the community as a whole. So, great interview, and I just happen to see it because I usually tape that, believe it or not, and then watch it later on because it gives you the most, I think, comprehensive coverage of the high school sports in the city.
That's fantastic, Egan. She really made Chaminet shine with the volleyball. Ms. Disart?
Yes, congratulations to her also, Ms. Kelly Pleasure. I can attest personally to the hard work that she does with our volleyball teams and with her teams. When, you know, you always talk, heard about football players doing two-a-days, well, a volleyball team did two-a-days at five in the morning and in the evening. She's a tough coach, and, you know, she surely works hard with the volleyball team and the girls, and the success has definitely proven her hard work is worth it. So congratulations to Kelly and all the teams, too, who have won in the past and made Chaminet High proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Disart. Anyone else? Let me move on to the next item, and I really enjoy this next item because these Chaminets do a fantastic job. So we have the Knights of Arms to make a donation tonight, so with their grand knight. And introduce everybody, please.
Okay. My name is Tony Doolook. I am the current grand knight of Archbishop Roman Council, right basically across the street. With me tonight, I have our queen for the Louisiana Crawfish Festival, teen queen, Kristen Nash.
Right.
I have her mother, Kim Alzerovic.
Right.
Behind Al, I have Fran Bourgeois, our past grand knight, Dennis Bourgeois, his brother-in-law and brother-knight, Tony Randazzo, Ruben Sevager, and my wife, Kim. I'm not good at public speaking, so.
That's all right.
So, on behalf of Archbishop Roman Council, with basically proceeds from the Louisiana Crawfish Festival here in Chaminet, I am presenting a check to the St. Bernard Parish School Board for Special Education in the amount of $5,000.
Come around and shake that hand. No, no, just come around. We'd just like to shake your hands.
We'd like to shake, we'd like to shake hands. Football.
Please come here.
Cliff, we've been working with you guys in Special Ed for a long, long time, and Ms. Janice Campagna was one of the great driving forces behind that, you know, Janice did that for so many years with us. She worked the Taste of St. Bernard with us when we did that before her became Katrina, which one day we hope we will be able to bring back to St. Bernard again. We used to do about 40 to 50 food booths and different beverage booths and things like that. Thanks to my wife and the ladies auxiliary for the job they did, but to all of you so much, we greatly appreciate the help that you give us, the help that you give our children. I've been in Roman Council for 39 years, and it's been a great blessing to be a part of them, to watch the Crawfish Festival grow from this little bitty festival to the thing that it is today, and it's because we have such great people in St. Bernard Parish to work with. Our officials always do a great job for us. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Just want to come shake y'all hands.
Thank you. And young lady, great to be with this group. Oh, thank you.
Again, gentlemen, we really appreciate all that y'all do for our school system and all of this. This money would be really appreciated with the kids in our school system, and thank you all again.
Thank you.
And, you know, I moved to the central office in 1988 to handle the finances for the school system. I've been a teacher for, since 1971 at Chaminet High School, but when I moved over and handled the budget and the monies, it was a line item, donation, Knights of Columbus, and I talked to Janice Campagna, what is this? And this has been so, so many years of your group supporting our children, it's unbelievable, and it's been without fail, year after year after year, and that partnership is just so precious to us, and y'all have been one of the constants in the parish, you know, we, and again, I had said this last week when we had another group up here, and our theme this year with connection. We cannot do any of this by ourselves, and it's our connectedness to the community and the community groups that make it such a positive experience for our children and make it so valuable. St. Bernard Parish is a wonderful parish to be born in, to grow up in, and to grow old in, and everybody cares about each other, and we're all connected. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. This has been, I think, one of the longest-standing associations that we've had with any group or organization, so we appreciate all of your efforts.
I think Ms. Foote summed it all up. Just thank you so much for your generous donation. You know, we see y'all, you guys, working at the Crawfish Festival and ladies, and, I mean, it's a long hours y'all put in before, during, and after, so we appreciate it, and our kids appreciate it, so thank y'all so much. God bless, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Be safe. Okay, move on to item number five, Super News. Ms. Snyder, good evening.
Good evening. In your folders, as marked as number five, you do have a communications report. This evening, I did want to share with you all, starting this year, one of the things that we worked really hard on doing was utilizing, Ms. Foote last year had mentioned to y'all that we have school, website, and communications people who do a phenomenal job. I wouldn't be able to do what I do without them. They are the people at the school sites who really make this all happen, and this year we really started to utilize Facebook accounts on behalf of some of the schools. And so what I wanted to do this evening, at the very beginning, you see some of the press releases, on this first page, you do see our St. Bernard Parish school system, and you'll see kind of our reach and what's happening there. I also shared with you, Chaminet High has also created their own Facebook accounts. This is really under the oversight of the principals, so Mr. Warner oversees this. Sometimes Fred Abear helps him with this, and so they have people who do some of this work, but it's either the principal themselves handles the Facebook account or their designee. You also see Davies Elementary, and so this has been just a great way for us to get in connection with our families and our parents. They've really appreciated having this form of communication directly with them, which we're really excited about. Then I just also wanted to share with you on the last page, some of our websites. So this is really just in the last two months since school kicked off. You'll see at the very top, we've had over 200,000 visits to our school district website, and just to give you an idea of what that looks like on an individual school campus, you'll see that it's been over 30,000 to the Arabi Elementary site. So Chaminet High obviously has more than that, but they're all pretty much in that ballpark. So I just wanted to share some of those numbers with you. This evening, we do have Super News, and so without further ado, I will kick it off to the boys in the back.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome to Super News, where we take a quick look at some of the good things happening in our school system.
We'll kick things off with some high kicking as we see the members of the CHS performing groups involved in a dance intensive class led by Chaminet High School alum Scarlett Lankin. This high-energy learning session is in preparation for the upcoming Christmas show, taking place on December 5th and 6th, and was a great example of our alum giving back to our schools. Musical theater intensive means I'm taking famous works choreographed by Agnes de Mill, Jerome Robbins, and Michael Bennett, and teaching and educating the students of Chaminet High today. Right now, we're working on Hot Chocolate, which will be featured in the Christmas Variety Show. This is just a small way to give back to the school that gave so much to me.
And while these performers were preparing for the stage, the CHS tech crew recently showcased all the magic that takes place behind the scenes in its recent light and sound show. Called It's So Random, the show also included guest performers in an effort to highlight every aspect of the varied productions that are part of the cultural arts season. Congratulations to Chaminet High alums Fred Abear and Brianna Acosta and all their techies for bringing this show to life.
And now, we'll head over to Arlene Muro Elementary to see what's buzzing at the home of the bees.
Hi, I'm Erin Funes.
And I'm Leila England, and welcome to Arlene Muro Elementary School and for our Super News segment.
We'll kick things off with some music as Mr. Landry, our band teacher, is teaching music to performance with his bucket band and percussion ensemble. Students that level up their performance skills in weekly rehearsals, and they display these skills for performing for school and community-related events.
These skills include understanding and demonstrating the basic elements of music and drum techniques, including beat, rhythm, sight-reading, proper grip, and posture. Students also learn different styles of music like classic rock, hip-hop, jazz, funk, and holiday songs. Drumline cadences are also learned and performed.
I tell you, that drum program can't be beat. In other news, as a culminating activity on the human body, Ashner Performances Training Head, Coach Lance Lacoste, came to Mrs. Lacoste's first-grade class to show the children how to live a healthy lifestyle. He did agility drills, speed improvement drills, and jumping drills. The students loved working out with a coach that trains athletes, including college and professional athletes.
Our second graders recently finished a unit on fairy tales and tall tales and enjoyed a day devoted to these stories. Students came to school dressed as their favorite fairy tale or tall tale character and enjoyed flapjacks for breakfast, just like Paul Bunyan. The students at Muro Elementary love learning and reading about fairy tales.
And now, we'll go from those granting wishes to those granting grants. Recently, our school received funding from the Joe W. and Dorothy Dorset Brown Foundation to participate in a service learning project. Third-grade students at Muro Elementary School will be partnering with the LSU Coastal Roots Program in an effort to restore our wetlands.
The students will plant and nurture cypress trees in our very own school courtyard and take a trip to transplant the healthy plants in South Louisiana. The Brown Foundation will be funding this project as the students lead the way in carrying out this plan as our wetland warriors.
Hey, Leila, do you know the name of the loneliest swamp in Louisiana? By yourself?
Anyway, thanks for tuning in to our Super News, and now we are happy to introduce a new segment for our Super News called Across the Board, where we meet some of our hard-working school board members. Bye!
Hi, I'm Diana Disart, Vice President of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, and I have been serving on the school board representing District 7 since 1983.
Hello, my name's Cliff Egon, I'm President of St. Bernard Parish School Board. I've been on the school board since 1995.
I earned a degree in elementary education, and I had a master's degree in supervision and administration, and I taught here at Muro Elementary School, and I thought that I could make some contribution in another way, serving on the school board, and to make some positive changes that I felt like were needed at the time.
I saw the need down in the Muro area back then. There was no elementary school, and so I talked to some supervisors in the school system, and they said, well, we have a vacancy in District 9. Would you like to run? So I told them, I said, well, okay, I'll take a look at it. I said, as long as I can get things done, you know? They said, sure. So, all in all, that's how Davies got started, and that's the reason why I got on the school board, because there was a need in the Muro area to have Joe Davies.
St. Bernard Parish school system is, I think, the best because of the people. Our people here, our teachers, our support personnel, all of the individuals working in our school are so sincere and dedicated, and they give their hearts to our children, and they do it not just only for a job, they love what they do, and our children benefit from each and every one of the personnel in our school system.
It's fantastic. You know, today, you got the Olympic-sized swimming pool, you know, you got the arts building, you got Chaminet High with the sport field, you got, all the schools are revamped, you know, to A1 condition, you know, so, but the children of St. Bernard really deserve this.
I love education, I love children, and I love St. Bernard Parish, and I just want to continue to contribute to see our parish thrive and grow and do great things for our children.
Thank you, Cliff and Diana, two more proud graduates of our public schools. And speaking of alumni, Friday nights under the lights continue to be a gathering place for so many Owls, past and present. In addition to the football games, the Chaminet High School Alumni Association recently hosted an after-game social. The Charmers held its annual dance clinic, and dozens of alumni band members returned to perform as part of the fun.
And now, we'll go from Owls to Eagles as we fly over to St. Bernard Middle School for its Super News report.
Hello, I'm Sydney.
And I'm Rodrick. And we'll start our Super News with our recent super dance, ours back-to-school dance. Hosted by our student council, attendance was at an all-time high, and a great opportunity for the whole school to come together and have some fun and dance the night away.
Two other events also demonstrated our school's commitment to connecting with our school's community. First up was our Moms and Muffins event, where all moms and female guardians were invited to join our students along with the SBM staff to enjoy breakfast in a casual social atmosphere.
Our male mentors also got into action when our school hosted Dads and Donuts, giving all of the adults in our lives the opportunity to get involved. These fun functions are a way to show that education truly is a team effort. Hey, Sydney, do you know why the donut went to the dentist? To get a filling.
And speaking of silent, our school continues its SSR program, sustained silent reading, which allows our students and staff the opportunity to read a book of choice for 10 minutes every day in homeroom. Students keep a reading log and take accelerated reading quizzes to earn a host of rewards and prizes. It's also a daily reminder that reading is its own reward.
Our sports teams also give us a lot to cheer about. Here, we see some of the fun that was a part of our recent school-wide pep rally. Our volleyball, football, and swimming teams were featured at the rally. Thanks to our coaches and student athletes for your commitment, and best of luck as your seasons continue.
Good luck to them, and thanks to you for watching. Now, back to you guys at the Penn TV studio. Bye.
Thank you, St. Bernard, for that report. In other news, interns from Tulane University continue their fieldwork in St. Bernard Parish, visiting schools to learn and to teach. Here, we see them working with students at Chaminet High School, talking about the importance of nutrition and hydration.
Most animal products are going to be higher in saturated fat because that's where we get it from. So by, it's kind of interesting that you went with a cheese pizza, the meat-fed cheese pizza has much more saturated fat than just the wing, so if you think about meat and cheese together, that's always going to create saturated fat content, so you could always consider just probably one in your whole.
And speaking of CHS, Owl Week kicked off recently. This week of spirit, school pride, and themed dress-up days are always a highlight of the school year.
And while fall is a busy season for our student athletes, it also marks the beginning of a different season, academic games. Recently, some of our best and brightest students from across the district competed, learning and growing, in hopes of qualifying for the national tournament taking place later this spring. Thank you to all of our coaches and sponsors for being a part of this important program.
And speaking of important, this month, we begin our teacher and pupil appraisal recruitment efforts throughout the region. We are looking for passionate, dedicated educators who are interested in making a difference in the lives of children. Our recruitment team will be visiting LSU, UNO, Southeastern, Xavier, and Loyola this month. There are two different tracks towards employment here in St. Bernard Parish. For those educators who already have or are in the process of receiving their certification, we have our traditional application process, which can be found by visiting the Human Resource page on our district website. Those who are certified are encouraged to apply ASAP as positions for the winner sometimes become available and are filled very quickly. For those interested in our alternative certification, Teach St. Bernard, you will need to apply for the program first by visiting our website. Applicants must have a bachelor's degree, at least a 2.5 GPA, pass Praxis 1 or equivalent ACT or SAT, and pass a content area praxis. Applications for the program are open and will close in February. Here in St. Bernard Parish, we are lucky to have the best educators in the state and even the nation. If you want to be the best, come join the best and apply today.
Well, that would just about do it for this edition of Super News, but before we go, we just wanted to remind everyone that October 10th marks the end of the first nine-week period, and that report card conferences will take place for elementary, middle, and high school on October 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
It's a great way for our parents and families to stay informed, stay involved, and always stay connected.
And for all of us here at Penn TV, thanks for tuning in, and we'll see you next time on Super News, where we always let the Super News roll. We'll see you next time.
That was fantastic. Y'all did a great job, and y'all always do do a great job, and I tell you what, the year's starting to fly by right now, because I just talked to Ms. Foote, you know, Ring Day's here.
Yes, sir. Tuesday.
Anybody would like to speak, say anything to Ms. Snyder? Thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, move on to item number six, it's Red Ribbon Week. Mr. Charles Cassar, glad to have you here, sir.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here sharing additional good news with you folks, and speaking of the years rolling on, this is year 26 of celebrating Red Ribbon Week under my times together with kids and red ribbons, and it's pretty exciting. This year's theme, I think, is really connected to, no pun intended, really connected to where kids are, moving the concept of extreme, because kids are into that extreme sport, extreme, just extreme living, and rather than making Red Ribbon Week something of an older generation, I tried to move it, and this is a custom ribbon. We put this together to kind of represent our own community and our own kids. So you see there, a teenager, and you're looking at this, you guys, number six, it's a colored copy. The ribbons come in tomorrow, actually, and it's kind of the fusion of our theme of connecting and the concept for our young people. The whole issue behind all of this is helping young people realize what we're asking them to do is connect to life. We're not asking them to be drug-free, to be substance abuse-free, to reduce their life, or to limit their opportunities, it's just the opposite. It's really saying to young people, don't open that door, but open the door of life and live it. Go into the extreme opportunities, because today, there are extreme opportunities for young people. We have kids graduating from the high school doing things that's never been done before, artistically, athletically, academically. Our community is being looked at now in a respectful kind of way, ladies and gentlemen. We We went last weekend, this weekend had just passed, my family and I went to Baylor University as their guest because of Ryan Morrison, who's there on partial academic and artistic scholarship. We were invited to come. We saw his opening performance with some of the brightest, most talented young people from across the country and met with the artistic director of Baylor University, ladies and gentlemen. It's happening. And young Ryan is the ambassador, helping us and our community move there. Two weekends ago, Arianna went to Northwestern, because we have students there. Opening that door of life to young people is what it's really about. And you guys have truly helped make that happen, our superintendent and all of you. And as that support level in our schools, helping kids get this is really the most important message that we need to bring on a daily basis. Substance abuse is going to take your life. We're offering you opportunities like you've never had before. So that's the quick summary of this, ladies and gentlemen, of what's taking place. And on our elementary level, there's all kinds of fun, small, I say small, centered within their own school community, red ribbon rallies. Our middle schools are going to support that with music and cheerleaders and high schools are doing some of the same. And on that note, we've started, two weeks ago, on the ninth grade level, we're doing a program, a 10-week program of Too Good for Drugs, Too Good for Violence. So it's a very wonderful upbeat, intense program that will occur both semesters to help put our kids in the reality lane of the importance of just this. So there you go, ladies and gentlemen. And I could go on and on and on. I told Shelby, I tried to keep this to two hours to see.
But Mr. Cassar, I tell you what, these days, drugs are a major downfall in our society.
They are.
You know? And it's people like yourself that bring awareness to, you know, to the public to understand how serious this issue really is. And so we develop the young students at this early age and hopefully they learn from that.
Thank you, Mr. England. I appreciate it. Mr. England, I'll tell you, we're working on just that concept of connections. I'm working with the Metropolitan Group across the river. And there's a conglomerate now of service providers. And we hope to once again, by probably into the new year, be able to bring something forward through Penn TV so that people at 3:00 in the morning that are in this situation can realize, there's this, there's this help, there's this, there's this organization, there's this possibility. One of the messages that's so important now scientifically is that, like other illnesses, addiction can be fixed. And for so long, the message was, you move into that arena of heroin, your life is over. It doesn't have to be anymore. There's wonderful medical strides that's being made. That's another level of what we need to do as a community, I think. So thank you guys.
And then again, you know, if a student sees another student that's having major problems, they should go to someone. Don't be afraid, you know? Go and speak with somebody, because you might be saving a life.
Yes, sir. So true.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to item number seven. That's Education Committee, Ms. Lemoine.
Thank you, Mr. England. Agenda item number seven is an update on cultural arts activities, and we will have Mr. Cassar again.
Charles Cassar has his magic school bus this evening of things to kind of show and tell. We'll start here. Ladies and gentlemen, again, you know, for so long, we struggled in this community for appreciation, for recognition, for value, when in fact, our community was such a wonderful community of loving, caring people that knew one another and were interested in one another. Well, as you as board and board members before you and Ms. Voeche and some of us were privileged to begin to look at the building of a cultural arts building, the Louisiana Philharmonic reached out early on and said, let's talk about the structure of what's going to be there so that when you build a building, if there's the possibility, we can be there. And ladies and gentlemen, not only does the stage fit them, but they're with us now. At this point, we are the only school district that they come to to perform, rather than our kids or someone else's kids needing to go to Mahalia Jackson, or going to one of the, the Alario Center or some other place. These men and women come to us. These are some of the finest, most educated people in the greater New Orleans area. And they're visually and musically beginning to mentor our students. They're now, they have chosen our site for this reason, and this is a very long conversation. I've wanted to begin an artist series experience in the community where young men and women who our teachers are able to look at a third grader and realize there is something here. A fifth grader, an eighth grader, there is more than just trying to bring that child to appreciate the arts. The arts are alive in this child. So the Louisiana Philharmonic now comes and they have decided that they would do their afternoon rehearsals with us at a 2:30 to 4:30 point, which means we've done the first one already. We had 166 kids. Our middle school band kids, the buses picked them up quarter to two so they could get in line at Shawman at 2:00. We moved it so systematically. And our high school kids got to hear the Louisiana Philharmonic Orchestra in the rehearsal of the Harry Potter Suite of Music, played with full regalia of instrumentation and yet music that they've heard before. It's not foreign. It was a wonderful intro into the process. Add to that, the St. Bernard Bar Association, Mr. Egan was part of that lunchtime meeting, unanimously voted to sponsor one complete concert so that 400 children on at least the second or third grade level, depending upon what the elementary schools wanted to do, would be able to come during the daytime for their Young Explorers Concert. The concept here, kids cannot grow to what they don't understand. The more we can see it and understand it, the easier our kids can be it. If you'd have heard that bucket band of kids at Davies, you would be astonished at what they sound like. Smith Elementary had the privilege, a couple of years ago, we received Mr. Holland's opus instruments that were repurposed from an Orleans Parish school that went to Smith. Everybody thought it would take forever. Mr. Greg Patterson took those kids at the Islaño Christmas event on the porch and knocked the audience out with what can be done. Children are capable of doing amazing things when we give them opportunity. It's truly amazing. On this, ladies and gentlemen, you guys, under Ms. Voeche's extreme kindness, Ms. Voeche. Come on, Charles. Our elementary kids are going to have instruments in hand. And add to that, the Jazz and Heritage Foundation stood up as to what we were doing. We are being granted lots of small grants so that we can create a Saturday School experience so that our elementary children who would normally have band just once a week and then an after-school will have the opportunity to work in very small groups with highly-trained people based upon their instrumentation. So we're going to do strings, we're going to do brass, we're going to do woodwind, we're going to do percussion from fifth grade on. Our middle school kids who want to grow in this field will be able to be nurtured and developed so that in the process, in 10 years, Shawman's Band will be Shawman's Orchestra with capacity beyond words. It's happening, you guys. It's definitely, it's coming, it's coming together. So that it's not just a music experience. On your, on your desk, you guys have a little note.
Yes.
That literally happened today as I was leaving Davies. A little girl walked through and with a big giggle saw that I was talking to Ms. Vaut and just handed her the note. And Sarah began to read the note and literally began to cry in front of me and she said, just look at this. That tells it all, you guys. Unprompted, a child who, when you realize there are those of us who are artists, and you either acknowledge it and build it, or you lose one of the greatest treasures that can be. What does education need most? It needs creativity. And those are the people who are going to build that base of creativity and move a system forward. So back to the days of Frank Otterer and then Doris as superintendent, you guys' investment is going to create a legacy that few school districts have had the privilege to have. It's happening as we speak. Just two elementary schools to look at for a second. Cecilia Marshall. Thank you so much, Ms. Asabeta. Cecilia Marshall, not, there's not a time that she does an art project that kids don't write. Art criticism, she's teaching critical art analysis at the elementary level. Children are describing what they do, there's an analysis. There is purpose and a summary of what they're actually doing. And children not only create, but write. This picture is of a house that was flooded during Hurricane Isaac. The analysis, I use long, short, and zigzag lines. The interpretive, the color and lines used affected by creating suspense. Now, that's a child's writing. You understand? What Ms. Marshall did is took their penmanship and kind of cleaned it up a little bit. But you see the effect, that the opportunity, this is magnificent art. Is this not? This is Smith Elementary, ladies and gentlemen, and I don't mean this derogatorily, please understand the grace that I'm using this statement with. The last time we had a very large group of art at the cultural arts building, some very influential people came in the building that knew nothing of our community and they walked in and they saw the work from Smith. And the comment of the lady said, this must be your most affluent school because the art is absolutely extraordinary. Art has no bounds, ladies and gentlemen. In 1334 B.C., a nine-year-old boy named Tutat Hamun became the ruler or pharaoh of Egypt. This is a third grader. Now, Ms. Halton reached out and asked if we could try to work more stimulating the curriculum. And our teachers now have gotten it, I think. This is new work from the beginning of school. This is looking at the Lusco caves in France. This is a third grader, you guys. Lusco caves in France, third grader. And I could have, I could have brought you 25 or 30 of these that are every bit this good today. The opportunity, again, you ask children to learn from a book or from, just from words, but you give them the opportunity to learn and see it and draw it and feel it and make it or play it and sing it, that's going to live with the child forever. Sarah Vaut. Sarah is on that same, that same wavelength at the moment and is working in both science and geography, sculpture. This is Sarah's mosquito. This is third graders' work, they're not finished. This is her third grader. They're working with sheet plaster of Paris. There's like a gauze-like material in here, you wet this, it's pretty expensive. These are the wings. And next week, when these, when these third graders come back to art, they will be putting these amazing wings onto their mosquitoes. And all of these are going to wind up on the Docville Christmas tree. She's going to have a Wetlands Christmas tree with cypress and all of those amazing things. Do you think these kids are going to remember mosquitoes and understand the process of all this, you guys? Now, I'm going to pass this around. I'd like you to figure out which snake is Ms. Sarah Vaut's and which one's the student. Recycled water bottle. Sarah's work. Isn't that gorgeous? This is phase two. This will eventually look like this. Because like singing, like times tables, you can teach children to do this step by step if you know what you're doing. Isn't that neat? Sarah's model. This is, again, working with environmentals, okay? This is a Southwest environmental that she's working with right now. Bobcat. Fun Bobcat, right? Lots of color. This is, these are fifth graders' interpretation of that. Literally hot off the press today, I scooped in and said, come here, Sarah, let me just whoosh. Just whooshed it up so that you guys could see literally what's going on within the classes.
I'm going to have to go retake all of it.
Cactus. Sarah's students. Amazing, huh? You think cactus will make sense now? Now, you know, there are those, those times in your life when you kind of go, holy mackerel. Well, alligators, right? Alligator eye.
Right.
Student version of working toward it. Another one. Again, I could have brought you 50 of these this evening. These are third graders. This is third graders. But watch this. This evening, as the kids are leaving, lunchtime, during their lunchtime, this is an art supplies from the classroom. This is their loose leaf. They're doing it. Doesn't that tell you something? That this is, this is moving children. This is filling their lives. This is why I'm still working, you guys. Smith Elementary. Not just fish, but look at these magnificent, or they're not, I mean, a school of fish, the whole concept. Children have never seen a school of fish. How do you begin to do that? These would hang in her classroom. Cecilia's classroom is like going to Ms. Frizzle's classroom, the magic school bus, and you're suddenly in the aquarium, or you never know where you're going to be. But this, this is what moves kids. Aren't they amazing? So the dates for you guys so that you can note some important things that are coming that either involve big stuff, little stuff. You've got this sheet in your, in your packet. And, thank you so much, Shelby. Red Ribbon Week, if you look at your dates there. Well, I guess first of all, this, this first performance, let's back up even more. October 9th and 10th, which will be tomorrow and the next day, will be the Islaño Museum Days. And good Lord, start me on that topic of how important our cultural heritage and our background and our connectivity to the national story is so important. We have got to help move our community to a better place to understand that America was literally... was literally born right where we are. And we're working on that as a group of people and some of our teachers are both working on environmental and others are working much more on the history part of this. Red Ribbon Week will be October 21st through 31st. We've chosen to actually go from the 21st, the National Days or 10/23 through 10/31. We've extended it to give schools a little bit more time to be able to do and fit it into their overall picture. December 5th and 6th is Shamet High School's amazing variety show. It's going to be an extraordinary production again this year. Tickets go very quickly. I would encourage you all, if you've never been to one, please come. You will, you will just be amazed at the beauty and the splendor of all the components that are involved. We're, we're going to do a student show on Friday, December 6th at 10:00 a.m. to bring our, our middle school and, we're not exactly sure, I need to talk to Mr. Warner exactly what we want to do, but we want to bring young people in to see young people perform. Wouldn't that make sense? You know? It's, it's part of the power of the turnover. And then as we go down, there's the Islenio Christmas, which will take place December 7th, 4:00 p.m. at the Islenio Museum. Once again this year, on Saturday, December 7th, we will again have Handel's Messiah performed at Shamet High School. The CHS Voices will be, will be performing with the New Orleans Concert Chorus, as well as U N O's Concert Chorus, which is a new addition this year, another whole realm of influence and connectivity. And our own Dr. Kristen Bauer, Machia Faber, Shamet High School graduate, went to New York, sang as part of the Metropolitan, now teaches at Southeastern. She will be the principal soloist soprano, and Kristen has a magnificent voice. She will also be one of our young, one of our artist exposure components. And another new point, which is an incredibly, is a real coup, on Sunday, December 8th, the New Orleans Symphony, the New Orleans Civic Symphony, it is the oldest volunteer group, they go back to the 40s, so many people who are doctors and attorneys and people of real capacity and influence who are musicians have been part of this group, and they're going to be one of our Artist Series experiences. So, that same group of middle school or elementary or high school kids and their families will be invited to this program as guests to nurture the, the artist component of, of these people. And then there's a whole list, ladies and gentlemen, of the school concerts that will be taking place and performances. On Saturday, December 14th, the Docville Children's Christmas Festival will take place. And I've highlighted that, the judging for the, the LSBA art contest, those of you that would be able to be there with us, if you could come out for about 9:00 a.m. to help select from this amazing array of art to, to represent our community. And there's a December 15th reindeer day, hopefully we will not need that. And then the, the concerts continue through the 19th. And then January 9th, we'll start the historic presentation of materials that's taking place for the Battle of New Orleans. And I would sincerely appreciate the opportunity to come back to talk about that with you guys. Okay. There we go.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kassar, for that very passionate and thorough presentation. You covered so much, I don't even know where to start.
I don't either.
Except for to say first, thank you for your leadership and passion over the cultural arts initiatives and such a sincere and heartfelt thanks from all the boards to our cultural arts teachers who really go above and beyond the call of duty in their classroom to put on so many of these projects outside of the regular classroom day, things like drama club and art club and music. We saw in SuperNews Tonight, the students at Miro Elementary, starting in elementary school, really cultivating this musical talent through programs like the Drum Circle and their regular chorus. And then eventually they end up in our Shamet High productions. They end up with Mr. Kirk and Mr. Rusk and now Mr. Lambert performing with the bands. I think about all of the community groups who call upon our school system because they want to have our bands and our chorus students performing at their events because it's, it's a wonderful representation of our parish. If you've never had the chance to observe Sarah Felt's class, her classroom is like a gallery, I encourage you to go and visit. Thank you to all the teachers who shared their artwork tonight. Thank you for keeping us informed about all the presentations and...
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. It's a pleasure, and I focused tonight because this could go on so, so long, you know. I focused on two elementaries because it's so fun. You know? It's just so fun. As you get into middle school, it's a little bit more pressure, and obviously, high school is a lot more academic pressure on the art programs, but you know, ultimately, it starts off fun and it gives kids that wonderful opportunity to expand. One other thing I realized I failed to share with you guys, on December 12th, we have been invited to, once again, to not only carol in the French Quarter, but we're going to perform at the Petite Salon, which is one of the most exclusive group of uptown ladies that meet. And that, that invitation has come forward for, we have about, only six, room for about 16 children to sing and to perform, and I'm going to give a historic background of New Orleans' connection to St. Bernard and St. Bernard to New Orleans, so. There you go. That's us.
For that update. Any other board members, questions, comments? Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just, I'm really encouraged that they see this and they're using their hands instead of holding a device or, you know, playing on a phone or something like that. They can actually use their hands and create, and that's really encouraging to me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warner. You know, I never thought about it quite that way. Everyone is so quick to want to criticize kids for being phone addicts, but think about it, if you don't offer kids an early-on opportunity to use their hands...
Right. That's correct.
So, there you go. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else for Mr. Kassar and Ms. Daisart?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Kassar, and to all the, all the cultural arts teachers, as Ms. Lemoine said.
They're wonderful folks, they all are.
Unbelievable, the programs that just continue and the branching of more and more opportunities, it seems like, for our students year after year. And I definitely appreciate your zest and compassion and all of the other cultural arts teachers too. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Kassar? I also wanted to say thank you to the parents who are supporting the arts, bringing their students to programs like the NOBA After School Ballet, to chorus and drama, on after school events and on the weekends. I know this weekend's Arabi Elementary Chorus will be kicking off the Sugar Fest at 1:00 p.m., singing the National Anthem, and it's always a crowd pleaser to hear a musical set from them. So, thanks to the parents who support the arts and our community.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kassar.
Thank you, guys.
The next agenda item is an executive item for Mr. Law.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Okay, and Item 8 is Administration of Medication, Efeneprine. And we have Mr. Jeremy Kirsch and Ms. Lori McGinnis to make a presentation. You guys have a hard act to follow.
I do. Sorry, sorry. We've got this.
But, you got this.
Last time I had a little bitty assistant, this time I got the First Lady. So, it's all going to work out just fine for us. Anyway, guys, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. As the supervisor of Special Ed, I am also responsible for the health services here for our students, and the health and safety of our students is a priority, and we're always looking to improve these services in our schools each day. I want to first begin tonight by recognizing our district nurse, Lori McGinnis. Many of our citizens know her as the First Lady, but we are lucky to witness her passion and commitment to the health and well-being of our students, day in and day out.
We knew her, or I knew her as a high school student.
Well, Ms. Vautier has taught everybody and knew, knows everyone, but just in case our citizens out there watching tonight, we want you to know that Lori does a great job in and out. But it is a very important job that she has in our system to take care of our kids and the needs of their health, in the, in the health area, but she can't do this alone. She has a team of nurses that works very closely with her tirelessly, and they meet the needs of all of our kids in our system. So, I just wanted to take an opportunity tonight to mention them because, you know, I know we have Nurses Week and opportunities to recognize them, but tonight I wanted to list the individuals and nurses that work with our kids every single day. And our team consists of Lori McGinnis, Janine Armstrong, Monique Pullman, Sandra Nucio, Cheryl Jennings, Tiffany Bryan, Julie Mancuso, Rochelle Alfonso, and Rosie Hanson. And thank you so much for, you know, always providing the assistance that our kids need because day in and day out, these ladies are going from school to school to school to care for our kids, and, and I can't thank them enough. But tonight, Lori and I are here to inform the board of an opportunity that over 30 local schools are capitalizing on. The administration of Efeneprine, better known as the EpiPen, you may have no, you know what is that. It's an auto-injectable device that could save a life of a student if they are having a severe allergic reaction or anaphylaxis. I would like to begin tonight with just a brief overview of the already adopted board policy that you have, which we have a copy in your folders labeled file J, G, C, D, and it falls under Administration of Medication. If you turn to page 7 in this, this packet, this is the piece that we're looking to, to implement. The school nurse or trained employee shall have the authority to administer auto-injectable Efeneprine to a student who the nurse or trained employee believes is having an anaphylactic reaction, whether or not the student has a prescription for an, an Efeneprine. At least one employee at each school shall receive training from a registered nurse or licensed medical physician in the administration of Efeneprine. Additionally, we have provided a brief summary of the reason this opportunity is so important and some required documentations necessary to administer Efeneprine to a student without a prescription. In your folders, we've also provided a PowerPoint with some important information for you and for the public watching here tonight. If you can turn to page 2, oh, well, actually, it's two pages, so at the bottom of page 1. I just wanted to point out, the board did adopt this policy, and I've, and I've given you a copy of that, and it's also on our website as that file. On page 7, we just went over that piece. I just wanted to say that that piece is also in the policy that we, that piece of that policy was adopted through 2014 Louisiana Law Revised Statute 17436.1. So, I wanted to read, just give you that caption tonight so that we can take a look at what, how important this is. "Notwithstanding any provision of law or any rule, regulation, or policy to the contrary, the governing authority of each public elementary and secondary school shall adopt a policy authorizing a school nurse or trained school employee to administer auto, auto-injectable Efeneprine as defined in sub-paragraph J4A of this section to a student who the nurse, school nurse, or trained school employee in good faith professionally believes is having an anaphylactic reaction, whether or not such student has a prescription for Efeneprine. At least one school employee at each school shall receive the training from a registered nurse or licensed medical physician in the administration of auto-injectable Efeneprine. The school nurse or trained employee may administer the auto-injectable Efeneprine to respond to a student's anaphylactic reaction under the standing protocol of a physician licensed to practice medicine in the state." That's the piece that we have not had in place before. I think that now, because of the reaction or the, the lives that have been saved due to the EpiPen, there are more physicians that are saying, "I will give you this standard order," and say that if we train these individuals, it is under their direction that we are allowed to provide that medication and save a life. Just so you know, Lori has been in contact with Tulane, and we have a physician who will be coming on November 1st to do a training with us, with our staff members. And we also have, this is not in your packet, we also have the order and the protocol that we have to provide or that he has to provide to us and that we agree upon. And so, another piece that I wanted to share with you guys too is that the EpiPens that we will get, if we provide this service to our kids, will be free of charge, okay? We're going to show you a little bit tonight what that looks like. Lori brought a few, brought a few EpiPens. This may not be as exciting as the artwork, but... But these are the training materials that we use when we train our staff on administering EpiPens. So, right now, we are providing training to our employees. We, we did go over to Ms. Vautier before we had the presentation because she wanted to know, and I asked her, "Would you be our, would you be our model?" Ms. Vautier said, "No." But at this time, we provide trainings to the nurses and to our staff members for kids that actually have a prescription. So, this is in case a child does not have a prescription or the child is having an anaphylactic situation that we have to react to, this gives us an opportunity to save a life. So, if you take off the blue clip or the blue top, you just remove it, and we're going to let you inject yourself, okay? You all are freaking out a little bit, but it's okay. There's no needle involved.
It goes through clothes. It goes right through clothes. And you hit, hit it, pop it, and then count 10 seconds.
There's no needle, so you're all...
There's nothing in it, no.
But it's that simple to save a life.
Directions on here, too.
Yeah.
But you've got to keep it.
Right. And you'll see that once it's, you know, completed, then we have to start. These are training tools, just so you know. So, each public elementary and secondary school may maintain a supply of this Efeneprine at the school locked in a secure, easily accessible location, which is usually in our nurses' area. A licensed physician may prescribe Efeneprine or auto-injectors in the name of the school system or individual school to be maintained for use when deemed necessary pursuant to the provisions of this subsection. So, you know, we will have these tools in each of our schools. There are two types of tools that we're looking at right now. So, Lori will explain that to you just briefly about the junior.
There's, there's two doses. There's an EpiPen Junior for, like, the little kids, I think it's 55 pounds and under, and then there is an EpiPen that's a regular for anybody over 55 pounds. And so, you would use either one. So, we'll have two. And it's not just for the kids, too, it's for the teachers or anybody that comes in to our schools.
So, there are triggers. I mean, the things that we think about. Sometimes, you know, in schools, we worry about peanut allergies, stuff like that. But, you know, the common triggers are food and insect bites. Also, some other things that we're looking at is allergies to latex. You may have heard that, like, you know, powdered gloves and things like that, medications and some environmental stimuli. All right. So, some of these symptoms that we, we will be trained on and that the staff has already began training for kids that have prescriptions would be like difficult breathing, difficulty swallowing, swelling of the mucous membranes, and a drop in blood pressure or shock. These are potentially fatal. Other symptoms include something like, maybe they have a hoarse voice, they may be nauseated or vomiting or even have diarrhea or as, they may be dizzy. So, the treatment of this Efeneprine or EpiPen or antihistamines are crucial to happen very, very quickly when they're in the state. So, in conclusion, you know, we do try to have a safe environment in our schools. We look at the, the different types of allergic reactions that kids can have and, but sometimes we don't know what could trigger that, and that's why we feel like this opportunity to have these pens in our school can save a life. Who is responsible for these? Who are we training and who are we looking at? Because I'm sure you're thinking, like, you know, this is, could be a serious opportunity, and what does that look like? That we may have to perform a lifesaving technique such as the EpiPen. So, our nurse and staff services will be trained, district and school-based. So, Lori will be trained as well as all the nurses I mentioned tonight. We're going to take a look at the school-based administration, maybe, you know, for opportunities when there are after-school activities and that may come a time that maybe an administrator's there, so we're going to take a look at those folks. Teachers and paraprofessionals, we're already training those, but we're going to take a look at expanding that now. Food services staff, Joni talks about allergies all the time to, to me. We have lots of opportunities in, in... We have lots of opportunities and, and reasons to have food allergies. Coaches and athletic directors for extracurricular activities, and very importantly is our transportation staff, because sometimes that happens on a bus where we're not, you know, there to help. So that's also some folks that we want to do. So lastly, we have, like I mentioned earlier, we did find a physician at Tulane who reached out to us, and like I said, 30-plus schools are doing this. And Dr. John Carlson from Tulane is going to be coming on November 1st to do the training for us. This is a required thing before we can actually be granted the opportunity to do this. And prior to that, too, before we actually implement anything, we'll be notifying the parents in writing. So do you guys have any questions, just like how, you know, this implementation could happen?
So for clarification for the board, Ms. Kirsch, Tulane's going to come in and, and provide training and the actual medicine itself, correct?
Correct. So they're going to come in and do the training with our staff. He's going to provide the protocol saying that you, you guys are going to, we are going to work under his direction, and then they're also going to, we're going to be able to order. I have an order form, I can show you what that looks like, and it's all free of charge.
So this medication that Tulane is providing will, will be for students that don't have their own prescription, correct?
Correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay.
In the event of, you know, an emergency.
Okay. And, and you guys will be possibly given some type of in-service to all the teachers to recognize maybe the symptoms?
Um, at first, right now...
Or just the nurses at this time?
To, for the administration is going to be a small group.
Okay.
Because it's going to be intense, and there'll be check-offs. Like, we right now check off our paras in medication class, so that would be an extensive on symptoms and signs and symptoms of, of the need.
Sounds good. Any questions, Ms. Jackson?
Yeah, what is, what is the risk if you give a child an EpiShot that doesn't need it?
That's the same question Ms. Boche asked, that's right. That was her very first question, you know?
Increases heart rate. That's a big side effect of it. But pretty much, you know, that's about it. If you're an older person, it does increase your heart rate. It could be, I guess, life-threatening too, but you've got to weigh out the, the risk of it, because they're, they had, they had a child in California that recently died of a, and they had, they had a pen right next to her. They didn't use it, and the child died.
And let me just add, we have children in our school system who have their own EpiPens that they carry around with them, and we have physician, their physician orders for those particular EpiPens. If the child is old enough, he's all, he's already, he or she's been trained in self-injection, and that, we get the certification from their doctors, the kids can carry it around and administer it themselves. We currently have trained on staff, all of our nurses and people at every school, so that's already been done. The only new part to this that we're looking at is we have not had before on our campuses, I hate to use the word despair, these things cost, what, about $400?
Four hundred dollars.
We have not had these on our campuses as, I hate to say the word extras. You know, Lori said, well, she saw someone do it, she'd take one from, you know, and do it. I said, oh, wait a minute here. But we have not had these on our campus before, and we didn't have a wider range of people trained. So all of our nurses are already trained. We all, and we also have trained people on our campuses. The kids who actually have doctor's prescriptions for these carry them around, or we have them if they're very young children. So we have all that in place. This is if there is an unforeseen reaction that someone has where their own prescription is not available at that moment. And we have to make sure that if any of our people would administer this, they are thoroughly trained. So the added component is having the physician from Tulane come, train additional staff, and they, and it's going to be the nurses, we have all, I think on the first, we're going to have the coaches, the PE teachers, the nurses, selected paraprofessionals, a nucleus of a team on each campus. So we're shooting for about 75 people district-wide, and that physician, after the training, and they have to prove that they can recognize these symptoms effectively, and they know how to inject it, then he will certify them at that point for this year. So this is just an extra precaution to have these on hand and additional people trained in the event someone is on campus, has a reaction that we feel is an actual reaction, and that we have available to us the medication that could be lifesaving for them. So this is just the extra component, because I want people to understand, we already have all this in place for children who could have these reactions. Where, they have their medication, we have the trained personnel, that's all in place. Okay?
And it may be rare that we even have to administer this, you know?
I would hope.
Right.
That it would never happen.
Since I've been here, we administered it one time, and it was a child's, you know, own EpiPen, one time in 13 years.
Yeah.
Right. We'll hear a few other questions.
We try to do prevention.
Mr. England?
Yeah, the only thing I have a question is for, for field trips, you know, they go get food, you know, from vendors. Would, would bus drivers be trained on this?
Yeah, we're going to eventually do, right, the bus drivers. We do, like, if, if there's a child that is really severe, we've, we've trained a bus driver before, because a child carried it, and actually, we had to put him in a special ed bus because there was a para bus driver...
Of an additional person.
Person to administer, it was very severe allergy.
Right.
So we've done that before, too.
So when that child's class has a field trip, then there's a special?
Yes.
So for every child who is known to suffer from this condition, we have all those protocols in place, all the people trained.
Annual.
And their own medication accessible.
That's a checkout procedure for the medication. Every time a field trip happens, they have to go in and do all, I mean, it's very planned out, I have to say that.
Okay. Mr. Egan, Egan, you have a question?
Yeah, I have two questions. Number one, do we have anything, say, if I had a child that does have a problem, can't eat peanuts, how's that? And is there anything that we get or do have anything from the parents to say, my child has this? So that we know that child, if he has it, you know, has that, the attack, that we can do what we're supposed to do.
So each year, we send home this paperwork, the paperwork for these types of things. And we have what we call an emergency plan for those children, and it's two to three pages long. And each time a child has an emergency plan, the school nurse goes to each teacher involved and gives them a copy of that plan, and it is gone, they go over it with them. And then whoever's trained has that copy as well. So yes, we have lots and lots of plans like that for students who have allergies, and as well as other things like seizures and, you know...
And our cafeteria is peanut-free, so...
Okay, well, that's the only one I knew about, so...
Right, and, but, you know, you still have possibly kids bringing peanut butter into the cafeteria, but we try the teacher and we try to talk to parents and say, you know, we have a child in, in the class that has peanuts, can you try to prevent? And they usually do, parents usually.
What about the supply we have, and I'm using it, something that may happen. You've got one child that's having a problem. The nurse comes there, and at the same time, or a short period thereafter, another child has that. Would each nurse have access to more than one of these little goodies to administer to the child?
Right, we just have to make that opportunity. I mean, I think we're going to order a few extra if they allow us, because, you know, it's very costly, but we want to have them on, you know, opportunities for the buses, maybe not to have to go bring the one from school with them. There's a lot of things that are going to be worked out, are told to us how to do through the physician. So he, he's all in charge of, you know, we will do this under his direction, his protocol, and that's what we have to abide by. But, you know, it is, it is very important. I mean, I, I can't stress that enough, and Lori has, you know, really stressed it to me, that this is an opportunity that for a physician to give us that protocol or allow us to do that, we're potentially going to save a life if, if it happens.
There's one thing that, too, is when you administer an EpiPen, you've got to call 911. So the EpiPen usually lasts about 15 to 20 minutes. That's guaranteed. You know, 15, 20 minutes after that, the child or the adult can begin having those problems again. So immediately, when we administer, administering that medication, someone's calling 911. And since we don't really live in a rural, so we have, you know, and the ambulances all have epinephrine on them.
That's good.
So it's very, you know, I feel safe to, like administering, calling 911, getting them and transporting the child.
That's, that's another thing that is great, because if you do have that and, and the child does have, let's say he doesn't respond like he should, and that's the situation you're seeing, then you're going to have 911 there to...
Absolutely.
Do a day effort. Fine, both questions have been answered, and this is fantastic to save a child's life, believe me. And thank you, too.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Ross?
No, I was just thinking, because I'm allergic to, like, epinephrine.
Yeah.
Like, if I go to the dentist or something. So what you're saying is only the children that usually have the EpiPen is going to be administered, or how's that? How do you, are you going to know?
Well, we're going to, we're going to notify the parents.
Yes.
And if that is an issue, they will bring it up to us, right.
That's what I was maybe, because when, if I go to the dentist, they don't administer anything.
Okay, you want to go again?
Right. Right, and that's the same thing like with peanut allergies or any, any additional allergies, like, you know, if someone's allergic to sulfur or something, we find those things out and begin in the school year, and then she does a plan for that, each nurse. Now, our kids with most significant disabilities that have a lot more health problems or issues that we deal with, Lori does every single one of those plans, and she talks with me and we go over those. So the, the others are done by each school nurse that goes along, so...
Yeah, that's what was my concern, is suppose that child is allergic to the Epi, you know what I mean? That could cause you, like, to have a heart attack or something, you know? We send out a health history form every year. It's annual, it's mandatory by Department of Education. And so it states on allergies, and so the parent writes down the allergy, anything that the child's allergic to on a paper, and we collect them.
Okay.
So, and if, if there is an allergy, we put it in the computer and not use the school system.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dave?
Yeah, I have one other question. What's the expiration date on these, you know?
One year.
Huh?
One year.
One year? Okay, do you all have to have these in a cooler or anything?
Nope.
Locations or anything?
We just have them on a lock secure area.
Little box.
So one year, huh? Okay.
And it's a lot like our AED.
Yes.
Equipment we use, too, those pads last a year, so we reorder those even when they're not being used.
We reorder them at the top.
Yes, same thing.
Thank you.
Another thing to keep up with, right?
Ms. Dave?
The students who carry the EpiPens, and if they administer it, is it mandatory also to call 911?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They all have plans.
Yeah.
And at certain ages, like, the physicians don't really just allow them, there's some, you know, there's some training that they do with them as well, and then they tell us whether or not they can carry them or not, yeah.
Right.
Usually six, seven grades when they start carrying it. Thank you.
So the bottom line for the, for the public is we're following state law, and, and everybody's going to be well, well-trained and prepared for anything that might happen?
And if there are any questions, you know, from our citizens, certainly can call the office and ask for Lori McGinnis at 504-301-2000, and either she or I can answer any questions that they may have concerns, and we'd be more than happy to meet with them as well.
Okay. Ms. Lamaline?
I just wanted to say thank you to you both for, this is a very stressful conversation. I'm stressed, my heart's racing just talking about it. So to all of our nurses who take on this responsibility, and to you Lori, you know, for your leadership, thank you. And to all of the staff members who have stepped up to say, yes, I will do this training, thank you to you. And to our teachers for being diligent, like you mentioned, about reviewing those health plans and the files with the nurses. Lot of responsibility, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, I appreciate it.
One quick follow-up, Ms. Kirsch, do you have an estimate how many students in our system have prescriptions now for this?
Um, probably about, usually the elementary schools, of course, they have more, the parents are more diligent. So probably about five or six at each school we have. And then middle school kind of drops down. But actually, at Shawman, when I was there, it was like 10, we had like 10 EpiPens.
Okay. And do you guys need any action from the board tonight, or this is just a presentation?
No, it's just a presentation at this point, that, you know...
Right, because it's already in policy.
It's already in policy, yeah.
And this is just an added component that will be done under the doctor's supervision.
It's the opportunity that we have now that the physician... We just wanted you to know about. Yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation, we appreciate it.
Like you said, if you don't mind, we'll take our training tools back there.
Please.
It wasn't as fun as the last presentation I had with all the sand and kinetic things and toys, but, you know, this is very serious, and we appreciate your support in this, you know, this effort.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the next item is personnel changes, and Mr. England, are you going to handle that?
Ms. Boche is really going to handle that.
Actually, it's a very short list, and for your information, any changes in the personnel situation at this time.
I see that we've got a couple retirees, huh?
Yes, we do.
Mrs. Lopez, Ms. Norman, we wish them well. Ms. Dyson, that's your critique.
Ms. Joyce Lopez has been with us many, many, many years, and we appreciate how long he is of service and wish her a very happy retirement. And Cynthia Norton, happy retirement also to you, and thank you for your service to the Central Parent School System. It's always said to see the retirees, they deserve it.
These are two wonderful individuals who have contributed many, many years to our school system, and we're sorry to see that they are retiring, but there comes a time.
Coach Angela.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, Mr. Warner, finance.
Thank you, Mr. England. This is, item number 10 is request for permission to advertise for bids for spices and seasonings, class two, cereal, dried beans and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five, meats and meats products, class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, and canned goods, class nine. So Ms. Bloom, looks like we need to do some grocery shopping.
Yes, yes, this is, this is our bi-annual bid. We will be going out for bid shortly for January through June, food purchases for our cafeterias, and so I'm asking permission to advertise.
Anybody?
Is there a motion to advertise?
A motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Dyson. Any comments? Any, anybody from the board? Okay. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 11-0.
Oh, wait.
Ms. White, I'm sure you...
It was, it was on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, superintendent's recommendations, Ms. Boche.
Just to remind everyone, we are in the middle of our annual financial and compliance audit. We hope to have it completed, and the results at the regular meeting in two weeks. As far as I've been told, everything is going extremely well as usual, and hopefully we will have the full report ready by that time. And as we mentioned earlier in super news, the Shawman High School Ring Day is Tuesday, October 15th, followed the following week by the report card conference evenings on October 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. 22nd at the elementaries, 23rd at the middle, and 24th at the high school.
It's getting busy, huh?
Oh, yeah. It's never a dull moment.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, usually.
Because the students really go to breakfast, I believe.
They do their little parade, they have breakfast, and then they...
It's about nine thirty.
Report card conference night for elementary school, on the 22nd, report card conference night for the elementary schools will be 4:30 to 7:45. For the middle school the next day, 4 to 7:15, and for the high school, 3:30 to 7:00. What we do is we start it an hour after school is dismissed, and then go into the early evening. So most of our, our elementary schools are dismissed at 3:30, so we start it at 4:30 to 7:15. The schools that are on, there are two elementaries on different time schedules. Araby Elementary is, gets out at 3 o'clock, so theirs will start... Araby Elementary is, gets out at three o'clock, so theirs will start at four. And Smith gets out at two-thirty, so theirs will start at three-thirty. So it starts an hour after the school, the day, the time that school ends at the particular site.
And that is a full day?
Yes. Full day of school.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Move on to item number twelve, Jonathan. Have a motion. Campbell, say, from the Sessa State, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's be as a joint, good night, folks.